Good day there, Ms. Melmer. We'll call the meeting to order. And welcome everybody to our regular board meeting for the month of October for the school district of Amory, and we have a great crowd here today. I'm pretty sure by the time the meeting's over with, there will be a lot less people. So it normally works that way. So we got a couple of things we want to do. First, a spotlight on education. Normally, we bring in groups from the school and whatnot to show some of the stuff that's going on. We have a special invitation and some special guests here today that I think I'll turn over and let Mr. Cook introduce to us.
Okay, I'd ask that our FFA advisor, the honorable Mr. Derek Meyer, please step forward, and we have a special presentation. I'll turn it over to Mr. Meyer and just ask him to introduce the FFA members. If he could step forward and be seen by the camera, that would be awesome. And I'd like to personally also congratulate all of you on a great performance at the National FFA Convention.
So just for the, yeah, for the record, Mr. Meyer, since it's on the camera, you probably should let people, everybody know, it's a big deal.
Sure. So my name is Derek Meyer. I'm the FFA advisor for the Amory FFA. And we just got back from Indianapolis, Indiana, for our National FFA Convention. And this was one of the most amazing years that we've ever had, and it really has to do with the amount of work and effort that our kids put into trying to do well at the national contest. The FFA organization is the largest youth organization in the world. We have over 600,000 FFA members. And so if you make it to nationals anything, and just to win anything at state is really quite an honor and means that the kids put a lot of time in it. But we actually have kids that they set their goals a lot higher than just winning state. They actually wanted to do well at nationals. And so all the teams that we had were all state champion teams, and then they competed at the National FFA Convention. And so we had, there were 60,000 FFA members at the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, and a variety of contests that were going on at the same time, besides all the motivational speakers and things like that. And so we had a bunch of different kids that did outstanding job. The first, we had to get down there on Tuesday morning, or Tuesday afternoon for the first contest, and that was our national champion team. And so if we could bring our senior quiz bowl team up first. The senior high quiz bowl contest is a contest that was started about 15 years ago at the national convention. And there's some states that are well-known for winning this. We've been in the competition before, but we've never gotten close to winning it. Well, we got close. I think last year we maybe got fourth overall. And so we were, these four young individuals were bounty, determined to win the national championship. So they studied really hard. Dylan Claussen at the end. There's Dylan. Dylan was also the national champion. He was a national champion individual, which is amazing in itself. And then, but we had, we had everybody placed in the top 25, which I've never heard of before. And so Michaela was sixth overall individually. Nick was fourth overall, and Haley was 22nd overall. And so we're just so proud of the effort that they put in. You don't just walk into it and think you're going to do well. And so we're just really excited for them. So let's give them a round of applause. Our next group was the agronomy group. The agronomy won state back in June. And we don't have, we're missing, we're missing Essie Whitehead tonight. So Essie Whitehead, Kelly Cheezit, Danny Meyer, and Allison Omen are part of our agronomy team, and they placed 31st overall. And they got a bronze rating. And they put a lot of effort. I've never seen a contest so difficult in my life. I would say that the people that won that, they were from Louisiana, and I would say that they could all be professional agronomists. I want to thank, we had some, Rick Dado that came in, and Mr. Mars from the local area here that came in and helped our team, and were very valuable to that. So thank you very much. 31st overall. And then our dairy judging team. And I'm sorry, we only have Thomas here, Thomas Christensen. And then we also had Taylor Elwood. And then we have two that are in school right now, Micah Dado and Gillian Jensen. They're out to college. And they competed. And this team, thank you to Gwen Dado for all the time and effort that they put in. They actually started working probably, I would guess, three years ago. They started working every Sunday. Before church, they would actually go and judge dairy cattle for about an hour and a half, and then countless hours, you know, during this, the year as well. And their goal was to get a gold rating and make it to the top three so that they would have a chance to go to Scotland. They were very close. They took seventh. They only missed it by about 40 points, which is, is just amazing. For us, we had a gold, we had a team that took second in the nation about four years ago, and they got that opportunity, and that's why these kids worked so hard. But to get a gold rating is unheard of. It's, there's only been like five schools in all of Wisconsin that have done that in the last, you know, 20 years. And so we're just really proud of them. The amount of time and effort, the things that they learned are just amazing. And so they got seventh overall as a team, and are just really proud of the effort that they put in. So congratulations. And then we have our parliamentary procedure team. You guys can come on up. And we almost have our whole team here, but some have to go to, had to go to plate practice because they missed a lot, a lot of days. And so we're just thankful that Lisa let them go last week because we just couldn't have done what we did. The parliamentary procedure contest, to me, is the hardest contest out of all of them. It's the proper way to run a meeting, and you have to use Robert's Rules of Order in order to achieve this. And Wisconsin is always a little bit behind the eight ball because our contest is way different than the national contest. And so we won state last, or the year before. And so this was a brand-new team. I started these guys in November, in the hopes that they would, you know, learn some stuff, and then they would be really good for the next year. But they were so good that they won state the same year. And so in seven months, they were competing against teams that were there for three or four years, and they beat them, which was an amazing feat in itself. And then they go on to nationals, and their goal, I asked them what their goal was, and they said that their goal was to make the national finals. And to me, that was, I've been dreaming about that for about 20 years. I've had seven teams that have made it to the nationals, and none of them have gotten through the first round. And I know the efforts that all of our teams put in before this. And so I was like, well, okay, then if we're going to do that, then what do we have to do to do that? And these kids, so we won state on June, I want to say 14th, and we got together, and they started practicing. And this is, so we got back on a Thursday. They started practice on Friday. And the only time that all of them could meet together was 8:00 at night. So we practiced from 8:00 to 9:30, sometimes till 10:00 at night, every Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday, all summer long. And then we practiced every day before school. And even with all that, I didn't think we were going to be good enough to make it out of the first round. Because the teams that were taken on are all college kids, and they've all been doing this for five to seven years. And my team has been doing it for 11 months. And so it just shows the amount of effort that they, not only at the practices that we had, but the amount of time that they put, you know, into it on their own. Because you just, you just can't do that without, this contest is just, it's amazing. And so we made it through the, so their goal, we went to there, and we made it through the first round at semifinals. And it was just one of the most, the biggest highlights of my, of my career. It was like Christmas for me. And after that, I was like, well, whatever happens from here, I'm just so excited that they made it this far. And then when their name was called, so that was the top 12. And then, and then we, then we made it to the semifinals, and then they, they take the top four teams to the finals. And when they called the first three names, and then they said our name, I don't even know if I heard it or not. I was in shock. And I was frozen for quite a while. The kids, it's just unbelievable to see what they did. And you can actually watch it. It's, if you go to the nationalffa.org, it'll be online there forever because they taped the top four teams, and they are part of the archives now. It's, I would compare it to the, to the national, you know, if you, for basketball, if you're talking the final four, everybody gets so excited when they make the final four for college. I would say that this is the same thing. It's just an unbelievable honor to make it to the final four. And then they didn't, you know, they weren't done. I mean, when they, they got third place overall. And the two, the two teams that beat them, we were right there. I know we were. But it was, it was very exciting. California took first, Missouri was second, and we were third. And little Amory, it was just an unbelievable thing because you just don't hear about those kinds of things happening. And I'm just very proud of the kids. The two that could be with us are Ally Hoyer, Emma Curtis, and then we have Dylan Claussen, Michaela Erickson, Max Johnson, Deanna Meyer, and Genesis Gusterson. And I found out as we went on, they said the reason that we kept going on and the reason we were so good is because of our debates. These kids are some of the best debaters I've ever heard in my life. And I can't tell you how much I've learned from them about how to debate and doing parliamentary procedure correctly. It's just, it's unbelievable. And then three of them are accredited, which means that they can actually get paid to do jobs around the, around the nation now. And Dylan Claussen, Michaela Erickson, and Max Johnson are all accredited. And our other, our other kids were only like two questions off from being there. So we're just really proud of their efforts. And it was just a magical, a magical year, one of the best years we've ever had down at the National FFA Convention. And we just hope that, I want to thank, before we get done here, I want to thank the school board. I want to thank the administration. And I want to thank our school teachers for allowing these kids to do these kinds of things. Because I know it's an effort for everybody to be able to do these things because these kids take off a lot of time to do these kinds of educational opportunities. And I think that if we look back on the, on the things that these kids have learned, they will be things that will follow them along for the rest of their life, and there will be memories that, I'm a big sports fan, but there's not much else you can do in the, you know, in the educational world as far as achieving, you know, to the, to the level that they got to. And that's, I'm just so proud of the effort that they, and it shows that hard work actually does pay off. So thank you very much.
You know, my dad liked to say something as well. After all of Derek's accolades of those kids, Derek, this doesn't just happen. This happens largely because of their leadership. So we want to thank you. So this is a big deal for people in the community, just so you know. This is not something small. So before, before we move on, before you kids, so please, no judgments on our parliamentary procedure. We do parliamentary unprocedure. We actually, a quick story, Mr. Meyer knows this. We were actually in a, in a meeting one night when we ran amok, which is not out of the ordinary. But we had to ask him how to get out of the trouble, out of the hole with the parliamentary procedure. So he was grateful to be able to do that. So, yeah. So please, don't use this, you know, not as the example of how not to do that. But before y'all go, we do have another acknowledgement that we wanted to make here tonight on behalf of the, of the Board of Education. And for many of you, even in the community, you know the name Bill Haig. Bill has, I would say Bill started in 1978, but Bill, really, your career started back in the 1960s here at Amory, both on the athletic fields and whatnot. But, but Bill Haig, for those of you who know, has been the voice of not just Amory Warrior Athletics, but Amory Warrior Events for just about 40 years. And Bill retired this year. I first, first met Bill officially, not when he was calling my football games back in the 1980s, but, but actually officially when I started to work with him in the mid-'80s, when we were both at radio together. And over the years, we, we kept a good connection. And, and then Bill actually worked for me for a while at Wixie, and that was great. But I don't think people understand when Mr. Meyer talks about the amount of effort that people put into a job, and one that, that you just, all you do is see the end results, but people don't get to see the results that go into it, and the effort that's, that's involved. I think Bill kind of exemplified that over 40 years of broadcasting, the amount of hours of preparation. As somebody that, that actually would work on games that he didn't do, and the pressure that I had to try to live up to the, to the level and the bar that was there, even the days that, that I called UW-Old Clark football games. I remember, would Bill have said this, or would it be? So, he never made a lot of money doing that, but put in, and I know as somebody who knows Bill and who's known him for years, did the effort, not because of any accolades or any glamour. He's probably embarrassed to be here today, but he did it simply because he loved kids. So after 38 years, he retired. And on behalf of the Board, Bill, we want to, we want to wish you a congratulations and a good luck. And we have a little plaque here that we'd like to give you. So, Bill Haig. Oh, man. So there you go.
Beautiful. I do have to do work.
Yeah. Before you go.
I just want to say, is this on?
It's on.
It's on.
The hearing is gone. I did work for Darren, and when it comes to radio, he was the best boss I ever had. So I, I wanted everybody to know that. Thank you very much for this recognition. And I don't sound the same as because I can't hear without headsets on. That's the honest-to-God truth. But anyway, we won a lot of ballgames. More ballgames than we lost. And I'm a poor sport. Darren would know it, that, that it's a heck of a lot more fun to call a winning game than a losing game. Your vocabulary is up here when you're winning, and it's way down there when you're losing. So, anyway. But my point is, I want to thank all the high school athletes that put in the time and effort, all the coaches, and the athletic records from Jerry Alain to Josh Gould. And I'm sorry that Jim didn't come earlier because I was overwhelmed at the time that Jim gave me on the air. And we really had a lot of fun talking about a few things. So, I mean, I could go on for, you know, a couple of years. I know you guys are busy, and I can't thank each and every one of you enough. And I thank you for your time and effort in, well, taking the reins of running our wonderful school system. So, thank you very much.
This time, I have one more quick presentation in regard to school board recognition. And from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, I have an award to present from Region One, Award Level One, Keith Anderson.
You know that you can.
Thank you. For, both of these are awards given for participation and involvement as a school board member. And for Award Level Three, which has obtained over years of participation and involvement as school board member, I present this award on behalf of Wisconsin Association of School Boards to Darren Van Blarke.
Jane Johnson was a Level Five when she left, and that's unbelievable. So I don't think I'll be wrong. All right. So that's all the fun stuff done here. You are absolutely more than welcome and not rude if you leave. If you need to go, it's okay. We can, we get it. So you really don't have to stand for this unless you, unless you're...
Can I shake your hand? Because congratulations, you guys were amazing.
Unless you'd like to hear about lots of things. Thanks, Danny.
Thank you.
Axe, congratulations.
Thank you, guys.
Allison, congratulations. Congratulations. Good job, Destiny. Were you paid a lot? Hey, Kelly. Dylan, good job. Well, that's cool. I'll take a motion to adjourn. That would be great. Yeah, I know. So, all right. We can move ahead with our consent agenda items. I did look at the vouchers of the minutes, and everything looked good, so I'll make a motion to approve those. Second, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Aye opposed. Okay. That moves along. Finance committee report. So, am I looking at the right one? I'm looking at the one on board, boy.
Mine isn't coming up.
Okay. Committee comments? Anybody here, anybody sign in? I don't think so. Oh, I'm sorry. My fault. And if you could state your name, that would be great.
I'm Pastor Kathy Pennington. I'm the pastor at East Emanuel, but I'm also the leader of the Amory Ministerial. And we just want to say a word of thanks to our administrators, our faculty, and our staff, and school support. Because Katie Johnson, and Deanna Johnson, and Tracy Hendrickson, and Mr. Cook, that have been coming to our ministerial meetings occasionally throughout the past year to help us bring our community closer and strengthen our community connections. And we just really appreciate them taking the time at our resident schooling to make that time on a Thursday morning once a month. We also just want to thank them for, and thank you guys as well as the board. We know, we understand that there is no written policy, but there's kind of a verbal agreement that there are no activities on Wednesday nights. And that allows for over 300 families, which includes over 500 students, to participate in church activities if they so choose. And that really is a nice time for us pastors to get to know our students better on a Wednesday night than what it is on a Sunday morning when we have a million other things going on. So we just want to thank you all. We want to thank the, the school principals for, especially elementary and intermediate, for working with us and trying to provide for our students who are in need, giving us lists of things for us to collect and work on. And we look forward to our continued partnership together for many years to come so that Amory can continue to be a strong community. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else? Good job. Okay, then we can move on to our informational items. And I guess Mr. Johnson is here. There she is. Talk about summer school.
All right. I just came to say a couple words about summer school and give you a quick update. Who's writing it? Jeff?
Sorry.
That's all right. We got it.
So just quick few slides. This year, we did summer school a little bit differently. We did three weeks of enrichment and remedial in June, four weeks of swim lessons in July, and two weeks of remedial in August. And I should back up and tell you, in case you don't know, that I filled in for summer school this year in Scott Morris accents. You probably did know that. So I filled in for the second week of summer school until now. So thank you for that opportunity. But yeah, we did summer school a little bit different. You can move on to the next slide. We've got some pictures of kids doing, this was the A to Z animals class. They were doing animal crafts. Keep going. We had 75 course offerings during summer school for K-8. We had a lot of really fun offerings this year. A lot of arts, sports, cooking, with 3D modeling and printing for the older kids, science, bridge building for younger kids, really some fun things. And two sessions a day, a lunch and breakfast provided free for kids who attended. More pictures. Here we have kids baking at the middle school for baking bonanza, and junk box wars where the kids took apart appliances and made really cool things. They were so excited. They're up on the tables working. They thought it was the best thing ever. We also did swim lessons a little different. We did those throughout the entire month of July, and we had 130 kids between the two sessions at the center in enrichment. Here we have some kids in the ice cream for ice cream class, making their homemade ice cream the last day. And remedial. We had offerings K-8, and then at high school, we had a combined social studies in English. We had an incentive this year for good attendance. And in June, 46 families earned that incentive. So it was, if anyone in the family earned it, they only earned one per family. But a really high percentage of them did earn that attendance incentive. And the kids in June got gift certificates for pizza from Countryside Co-op and a gift certificate for fruits and veggies from Dick's Market. Then in August, 28 families earned the incentive. And again, a really high percentage of kids earned that incentive. And that was a gift certificate from the Village Pizzeria. We also offered busing in August, as we heard from a lot of parents, that they wouldn't be able to attend if we didn't offer it. Only 35 kids rode between two bus routes, so not a real lot of kids took advantage of that. But it probably did provide a way to get here for some kids who couldn't get here otherwise. Here we have Mr. Vanderburg's "Don't Try This at Home" class, and they were exploding things. Things were going 30 feet high in the parking lot that day. It was very funny. Other offerings as usual, band dance, weightlifting, driver's ed, summer reg, and freshman orientation was able to be included this year as well. And then finally, the minutes. We had 3,700 minutes in, in total. Two million of those from traditional summer school, and one from the first three days that we counted as summer school. And last year's total was 1,900. So we increased that by quite a bit. That's all I have for you. Thanks.
Thank you. Do all those minutes count in on the FTEs?
Yes.
At 100%?
There's a conversion. 48,600 minutes count as one FTE.
Okay.
We actually doubled our FTEs for summer school this year due to the Great Summer School program and the three days of school counted as summer minutes.
All right. Any questions, Darren? Move on to our administrator reports. Thank you, by the way.
Just an informational item for you. I'm not sure if you're familiar with Act 59. It's called the Incentive Grant. It's a CTE-specific grant. And what it does is it incentivizes for schools to encourage kids to get certifications, such as the ACCT, which would be a childcare certification, or a Cisco certification, which is a technology certification. And we do a lot of that in Amory. Each kid that gets a certification, the number that they give you is $1,000, but it turns out to be a little less than that. The district gets that money back. It typically arrives at the end of the school year in June. For the last three years, we've done that. We have two totals, and then a third would be a number that we submitted here last month. In '14, '15, we received $39,000 in incentive grant money back. And in '15, '16, $22,877. And we just submitted 45 kids for $45,000.
Some of the good situations that we're going to be in over the next couple of years due to our debt falling off and doing due to paying off some of our of our debt fast, early and on time. And because of that, it leaves us with a situation where we have some opportunities to be able to make up some grounds that we may have lost over the past several years of budget cuts and that sort of thing, especially within our classroom and educationally. So it's been nice to look at some of these, some of the models that are out there as to what sorts of revenue we have, what sorts of possibilities that we have. And I think that the thing we really want to pass out to the community is sometime over the next couple of weeks, you'll see either in the mail or online, you'll see a survey coming out, a community survey, and we really want to encourage people to take time to fill that out because it's going, it's, there's a variety of questions strategically regarding, you know, your feelings about the school, how the school's doing, how well we're doing educating your kids. But there's also a section in there talking about finance that that will give us some direction as we move forward, you know, in possible referendums and funding strategies coming up really within the next five months. So it's going to be a fairly fast, fast turn of events here over the next couple of months and what we're going to be working on as a board. But at the key point now, the last, I guess, puzzle piece that has to go in before I think the board can really make our decisions is to really get that data back from the community on, you know, where we can go because it's our opinion that, you know, if we're going to go and do a referendum, then it's important that we understand the needs and what the community believes as well. That's the whole theory behind referendums. So we want to be very sensitive and make sure that we're, we're doing the right things educationally and community-wise as we move forward. Anything else? Okay, now we move on to our informational items. Mr. Dierfler, Dr. Dierfler, you got it right.
There's been an increasing number of trips that we have added to the itinerary for speak at the high school. There are the standbys, I call them the first tier of trips, which have been happening since the early nineteen eighties, the band trip, the French trip, the Spanish trip. And those trips have been on a consistent rotation for, again, three decades. The band trip's gone thirty-four years and the Spanish trip and the French trip have taken turns going to either France or to a Spanish-speaking country. What's been added to the list is a trip to Washington DC and two separate individuals, Mrs. Rilo and Mr. Melberg, have posed trips to Europe. And what's been created here is a trip schedule where there's no more than two trips every single year all the way through two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. So it runs out ten years and then we can continue the rotation beyond that. The trips that are on the docket for this year, which runs through the summer of two thousand seventeen, that's considered this year as the band trip, obviously. And then Mrs. Rilo was doing a trip in the summer of two thousand and seventeen, then she's been meeting the elder right then, the French trips out began, Washington DC trip. So there is a consistent rotation. The reason that we've created this is so we can be responsible with the family so they don't have to make very difficult financial decisions where there's four trips and their kid wants to go on all of them and they don't have the ability financially to do that. So this spaces those out a little bit more. The other idea is to not step on the toes of the trips that have been going for the third party in thirty years so they're not going to the same places. And this rotation ensures that as well. So this is the rotation we have set. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to try and help.
Sure, I have a question. I thought it was a great idea, really. But my, the question is, are we tying our hands? What if three years down the road, the choir gets invited to sing in Norway? You know, how do we plug those, or a different opportunity comes, comes in? How do we plug those opportunities into this?
We get invited to Norway? We put it on the schedule, I guess. Now, I can't foresee what would happen there, so I guess we would put it on the schedule. I don't think it would be fair to put it on the schedule and cancel the trip that's in that year because they planned for the better part of two years to get close to.
Would it be if, if, if a teacher came and said, hey, I've got this idea to take, you know, choir acts, where I just, choir is for hypothetical purposes. But, and we want to do this four years from now, you know, so we'll start working on, would we then maybe move things around just a little bit?
I think we're moving towards too many trips at that point.
Yeah, so would we maybe pull one out or would we?
I think we would have to agree to pull one out or modify the schedule, but with this, we're already moving towards too many trips. If we add more, I think we are too many trips. We have four hundred and sixty-one kids at the high school. We've got six separate trips.
Oh, I get it.
If you add a seventh and eighth and ninth, I don't know how we would do that financially for families. Because then you're making kids choose between, do I go on the band trip or do I go on the trip that you're going to be referenced to? In the band trips, the crown jewel of the four years of being in band and the French trip and the Spanish trip are part of their actual curriculum. This is where they actually go and study Spanish and French culture and use the language. Adding trips to a running competition with that, I think is unfair to most curriculums and further, it's unfair to most staff. So if something happens, we'll certainly entertain that offer. We're not going to turn, turn kids away from a great opportunity, but we've got to be careful about adding too many trips.
So the next question is like to Mr. Melberg or, or Ms. Rilo, are you planning on ten years, we're doing this on a rotating basis or are these just plugged in?
Currently, and I don't want to speak for Mrs. Rilo, although I think she'll say something similar. At this point, I have a one-time trip planned and then we'll see.
So then, Mr. Dierfler, back to you, then we, this is just a plugged in that we're going, that if there's going to be another trip, here's the hole where it is so that we're not funding. Okay, I understand. Makes sense.
According to this schedule, the next opportunity I would have to lead us to a trip is two thousand twenty-two.
But if Mr. Melberg doesn't take one, then that leaves a hole to somebody else that might have an idea, whether it's a trip to wherever.
Yeah, I think he's going to talk about two thousand nineteen and it's, I think, tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense. That's my question. We don't have to vote on it or anything, so I don't think, should we?
Informational.
It's just informational? It's a plan? Is that something we do need to vote on eventually or we, is that just administrative? Do you deal with that?
No, it's, they come to the board.
It's over here. It's easier to come and they go for it.
Okay. Great. Okay, the next one's the first reading in the school calendar. If you saw that, all it does was take out, it's called collective bargaining in the school calendar, which was, should have been removed a few years ago, so. That was it. So a lot of second reading. Also, we have some questions on that. Then we have action items, right?
Yep.
All right, so Mr. Cooked.
Okay, the Avery Lions, which are part of, they, they've held a golf outing the last couple of years and they wanted a specific intent or designation for the funds that they raised rather than just for the general fund. So they had asked me about it and I had suggested that maybe funds could be partially used for technological needs at the school. And they jumped on that right away, used that as a promotional activity and, and they decided that half of the profits or what they had budgeted, about eleven hundred dollars, would go toward this golf outing. But they had a great turnout. They ended up being a great fundraiser on the first day of school nonetheless. They have a schedule for a day in June next year, but they raised over fifteen hundred dollars in addition. So they have a check that they'd like to present for twenty-eight hundred and fifty dollars to the school district for students in need for technological purposes. And I asked that the board accept that and there will be a big check presentation. We'd like to have a board member at on November first in the morning if that could work next time. Tuesday, we need somebody in town that could do that.
Do you want to catch us afterwards and see if we can check schedules on that?
We'll get, they want a photo opportunity with the Lions.
I'll take a motion to accept that.
Second.
Did you make it?
Yeah.
Okay, who's second?
I'll second.
Dale, any discussion? No. Any discussion?
I think it's.
So it was Dale and then, no, it was Keith then Dale, yeah.
It was just because they left.
Right? Yeah, pressure's off. So any discussion? All in favor? I opposed with a big thank you to the Lions Club. That's very generous.
Great.
Yep. All right, next, Europe trip, two thousand nineteen.
No, youth options.
All right, youth options.
Here tonight on behalf of six students that want to do youth options at a variety of places in the spring of two thousand and seventeen, there are six kids, eighty-four credits. They have met all of the criteria to be able to participate. Four are going to WITC Richmond, I believe the other two are Barren County, I can remember that right? Actually, Barren County, one was where they're falls. So those six students would like your approval to do that in the spring of two thousand seventeen.
Take a motion?
Make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? We don't have option on this one, I have to vote anyway, so. I love these kind of votes. All in favor? I opposed.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, next, we're going to talk about the Europe trip.
Okay, Mr. Melberg's going to come out and run through the, there's the Europe trip, which is set to take place in the summer of two thousand and nineteen. So please go ahead of the schedule as we get through all things.
Overachiever.
Well, that's not concerable.
Okay, just a few things and to highlight kind of that schedule. Mrs. Rilo and I have worked closely. In fact, Mrs. Rilo is the one that encouraged me to, after the DC trip, to look into doing something overseas as well to give our students a few more opportunities. We kind of scheduled together on what would work. We had to make some, a few changes, but ultimately, I think we're making it work quite well. We have actually a similar trip, but Mrs. Rilo's going to, in her next trip after the summer, the summer?
The summer, yeah, there are thirteen students and two adults going to Italy with me and we had talked about that two years ago and, yeah, we're, yeah.
And?
And then, um, last summer, I led a community trip to Greece and Italy and I am hoping to lead another community trip in two thousand eighteen to Germany and Italy and Switzerland.
So Mrs. Rilo's is, is more said a community trip. So anyone that wants to go as a family is encouraged to go with that trip. Mine is a, is a student-centered trip with just the kids. The plan, we've been working on this since last spring, but is now Germany, Switzerland, and Austria. It's a nine-day trip. I had an interest meeting where I had forty-eight students that signed up as interested. Obviously, I know that number's going to come down, but of those forty-eight, I've since received thirty-three who have sent me parent emails. So they've taken that next step that at least towards this. So what I'm looking for tonight, and I can answer any questions you have about the trip, is your approval. And then from here, I'll have a parent meeting and see how many students I can get. As far as the schedules, as I said earlier, at this point, this is kind of a one-time deal and we'll, we'll see, we'll see how things go and what the student interest is in the future.
Perfect.
It's through a company called Explorica. We've used.
EF.
EF tours in the past. Explorica is a spinoff, but they've been around forever, very credible company. Mrs. Rilo, are you, you're using Explorica for which trip?
I'm not.
You're not, no? Okay, that's.
EF educational tours, who I've gone with before and I'm continuing with them.
Okay. But Explorica is very similar to EF tours in everything that they offer as far as trip protection, in safety for the kids, a certain level of hotel room at every stop. They've got forty-five offices throughout the world where they will make sure that we are taken care of every step of the way.
Is there a number of kids that you're limiting yourself to?
Right now, I'm offering it to the freshman and sophomore class since this is two thousand nineteen. Our juniors and seniors will be, will be long gone by then. We'll see how many we get. If, if next year, I might offer it to that freshman class, I'm anticipating somewhere between ten and twenty-five. If we get, I might, I probably limit it to twenty-five, depending on chaperones, which doesn't seem like a difficult to find.
I'm wondering when they ask, start asking the school board if they have those kinds of things, you know?
The nice thing, as mentioned earlier, it's two thousand nineteen, so it's three years old, but students can sign up, once they have the parent meeting, they can sign up. They can start making monthly payments. So right now, the monthly payment would be about a hundred dollars a month that they could make online to pay for the trip.
Okay.
Can I get a motion to approve that?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Always a good thing. These trips are, are great educational opportunities for kids, so.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Really good. All in favor? I opposed.
Thank you.
See, Mr. Melberg, can I make one mention about that? I was approached by a community member just recently about the band trip and then some other trips, asking, well, how is the district affording to send these kids to all these places?
That's a good point.
And I explained to him that the, that the district's not funding these trips. And then between students raising their own money with their family and large booster organizations like the band and all the sales projects that they do and all the other clubs as well, they're funding those trips. Same thing with FFA and, and FCCLA and those things, when they leave and go to a national conference and things, that's kids fundraising out of their own pocket or the community support, so. And we've got great community support and we appreciate all that, but I just wanted to make that point.
It's a good clarifier. Yep, no, it really is. We, as the board, need to authorize that because they're going under the name of the school district. That's why we have these types of things, but the, the financial responsibility doesn't really fall on us, so. Just the responsibility for the safety of the kids and the stamp of approval. Yep, great point, thank you. Okay, so we got that one done. Fund forty-six, Mr. Cooked.
Yeah, just briefly, we brought up fund forty-six previously. It had been discussed over the past couple of years and at this point, the board needs to take action. We would like to start the clock. It's essentially five years from, from the approval of a fund forty-six. We can simply put five hundred dollars into a fund, which can be a future building fund, and then at any point, a large sum of money can be placed into that fund. And we just have to have a general building plan in place, which we do have now with the information that we came back with the needs of the deferred maintenance and facility improvements from our Kraus Anderson facility feasibility study.
So you're recommending that we do this?
So my recommendation is that we.
Just establish it even if we don't have a reason.
And, and that requires a resolution by the board, which we have to working in for a resolution.
So first, can I get a motion to authorize our resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Dale, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Chelsea, so any discussion? So just again, to clarify, we're not, because I've heard this, we have not, there are no building projects. We're not building anything right now. That's not to say that we won't or that the plans won't change, but as we sit here today, we have no plans because that gets out. I had somebody come up to me recently and say, why are you building a new elementary school? And I said, hmm, news to me, so, no, that's not.
You're the last to go anyway.
Apparently, I missed that one meeting a year ago. Apparently, I missed it. So no, but it's, it's a fund that should those needs change or should we identify that down the road, which is a possibility, but there are currently no plans.
And really not just building, but maintenance? If you're looking with that tenure plan, if you know down the line, you need boilers and windows, so it's not structural buildings, but it's maintenance plans that you have. It's a mechanism that they allow you to kind of have like a little piggy bank or savings account for those future projects, but no, it's not building. It could be, but it's not.
It's, it's one way for us to be able to save for future plans, which we can't do within fund tab.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yep. So did I state that correctly?
Close.
What did I miss?
Do we have to do the amount that we're going to fund?
No, 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 I'm just making sure.
Do we have to start it with five hundred?
There, there was a motion made in the second, it just has to be voted on.
Yeah, this is our discussion.
To the, the resolution.
That was my motion.
I just wanted, I mean, the clearness of the fact that there are no current plans sitting on our desk.
Yeah, no plans to build an A bill.
Really, and two, it's just a minimum amount to establish the account and what you want is to establish it because the clock will start ticking from day that it's established and then after five years is when the funds are available.
Okay. And if we don't use that, then the funds can get absorbed back into whatever, right? Or what do we do with those funds? Do they always just stay there?
They just stay there.
So we, if it's five hundred dollars, we can spend five hundred dollars on light bulbs in five years, right?
Sure. You, it never goes away.
I understand.
You just have to use it on a building item. If you never put another dollar in, you just wait and buy some ceiling.
So is there a maximum or?
No.
No maximum.
Can you put bonded money and things in there? Can it sit or it's, no? You can't put referendums? That, that, that's not correct. Money from referendums in there? So it's just, so where, the, the money basically would be found in fund balance or money instead of going to a fund balancer to pay off an O-bow. You would designate that money. Or you would budget it for a year, knowing that you have different budgeting priorities and you could stick it in there.
That's typically what districts have done is establish a fund forty-six at the end of the year in a little of a fund balance.
Okay. All right, that makes sense. So any other questions? All those in favor? I opposed. Done there. Tax and revenue anticipation note.
That's kind of just a long way of saying our short-term borrowing and I come here and ask you every year, just a mechanism that we, I need your signatures. I work with primer bank and we have it in place for any time that there's a cash short trouble. Sometimes right around the beginning of December, we don't get our state aid, but we have a payroll and it can be just a matter of a couple of days for that state aid to come, but we have payroll and I can access those funds is what I call short-term borrowing.
And we know you break out in rashes when you do, so.
I tried very hard to not use it, but I'm also not comfortable to not have it. It's kind of a, just a safety that if a cash flow happens and I have to ask you to approve it or accept it tonight and then sign away on a million little flags.
Gotcha. So can I get a, a motion for that?
I'd like that.
Lynn, is there a second?
Sorry.
Keith, any discussion? All those in favor? I opposed. And that one carries. The two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget levy and mill rate. I will turn that back over. Do you have the amounts? So these are the finalized amounts after our, after we've got the certified.
Equalized value.
Yeah, the equalized value. They certified our numbers, the third Friday counts, those types of things.
Yes.
So the third Friday count, I'd ask Mr. Cooked for that information. That looked like, is there an increase in our, I know it's a three-year rolling average, but specifically for?
Yeah, our student count, our, or head count is actually fifteen thirty-five, which is up from our student count, five from last year. And that's according to information, the records. Now, that's different from the membership count, which is a, it's a calculation and includes open enrollment in and out. I would like to mention that our open enrollment is out, is the same as it was last year, one forty out. However, our open enrollment in from last year went from seventy-one to a hundred and three this year. So we're up thirty-two in our open enrollment in, although our open enrollment out, which has, had been growing over the years, stabilized, at least it hasn't gotten more.
So I may, I may not be correct, but this is the first time in a while we've seen positive growth in our enrollment. So even if it remained at level, that's a, that's a, hopefully, we can hit the bottom on it. Yeah, it's a good sign. That's wonderful. That's great news. Hopefully, it's a trend and boy, that open enrollment number is really, that's a number we've been trying to change for the last couple of years, so hopefully, that's because of some of the projects that we've been working on that are starting to pay off on some of those types of things. I can't verify that, but we'll take the pride.
Yeah, we've got some great innovative programs going on with AIM, Avery, Avery Mines at the middle, at the intermediate school and with the academies starting at the high school and of course, the Montessori program, which we're certainly looking to build upon.
Well, and the clubhouse, I mean, all those things work together. The marketing efforts, everything works together into one big package.
And since we're talking budget, I'd like to just mention too, I looked at some numbers since two thousand and ten, which that year, there was an over six hundred thousand dollar reduction that the district received in state aid, another large reduction the next year. Since two thousand and ten, there's only been one year that we've received more state aid than the previous year. But since then, this coming year, our state aid is over one and a quarter billion dollars less than what we had received in two thousand and ten. Those large reductions naturally put much more burden on taxpayers and it causes us to make cuts, the deficits that we've had for ten consecutive, consecutive years we are facing now. So there are needs that the district has and we'd like to continue programs and that's why this talk about operational referendums, that you'll hear more about the community and the survey that's going out will lead us to, lead the board to making some very important vital decisions for the future of the district.
So that certified, did we put that up, the new?
We should probably get it up on the screen.
So this number is different than the one that was approved at the annual meeting because we now have the official numbers. We by law have to approve the one at the annual meeting, but also by law, we'd have to have the real one done now, so. Do we have it? I'll find it if it's not. Because it wasn't attached to board book that I.
I have it here.
No. Is it?
Yeah, it's in board book.
It is. It wasn't on the one, it's not the one you have up?
I'm looking at it right now.
Oh, it's right here, yeah, this one is. Yep, it's up. You have maybe the, a different version. Yep, it's in board book. Well, it downloads if you're using Firefox. If you're using Firefox, it downloads, it won't bring it straight up, so are you using Firefox as your browser?
Well.
The levy for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen will be nine million four hundred eighty-two thousand fifty-six dollars, which is an increase of one hundred twenty-seven thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty-eight. And that is a one point three percent increase in the levy. The mill rate will be point zero one 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 seven six one three, which is a decrease of point zero 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 one one six seven nine. So there's a decrease in the mill rate and the increase in the levy, but that's the numbers. It's not a huge change in what we had decided it would be, so it's pretty close. So increase in the mill rate, increase in the levy and that's because of, the levies because of the revenue limits and the, that we have and the mill rates because of the property values and they all work together. So can I get a motion to accept those numbers?
I'll make a motion to approve those numbers.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Keith, any discussion? All those in favor? I opposed.
Okay. All right. Next, that was it. So we can, who else had anything here?
Might just be worth mentioning, so on a hundred thousand dollar property.
Yeah.
Right, that should be a decrease of what, eleven dollars?
Eleven dollars on a hundred, eleven dollars per hundred thousand decrease in the mill rate.
In the mill.
In the mill rate, right. Yep. So depending on your property values, you still may pay more or less property taxes depending on where your assessment falls.
Exactly.
But the mill rate itself is less, eleven dollars per hundred thousand.
Townships are assessed in different, you know, one township may.
Different levels. If your one hundred thousand dollar house this year is worth a hundred and fifty next year, you're going to pay more in property taxes by simply not doing anything, just by the.
And I always caution everybody that it's this school portion of it because there's many other layers in there too.
Right.
Taxes go up, it's not just the school.
So next, I'd like to get a motion to move it to closed session to discuss personnel and we will be moving it to closed session to consider employment promotion, compensation,